A little bit of technical issue over here. Good afternoon, I'd like to call to order our meeting today, this is the Salina City Planning Commission. We're going to start today with a call to order and a roll call, which I believe we've satisfied.
We only have Ms. Eisenhower and Mr. Norland are absent.
Thank you, and approval of minutes today would be on our last meeting, which was July 17th.
Moved to approve.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting, minutes is read, all in favor, vote aye please. Any opposed, motion carries. And that would bring us to new business today, so our first item is a public hearing item, it's application Z-1813, which is filed by the Salina Planning Commission requesting a comprehensive review and amendment of Article 10 signs in order to adopt specific regulations applicable to electronic changeable copy advertising signs and other electronic changeable copy signs. This is continued from our July 17th meeting also.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just for the benefit of those in the audience, this is a text amendment, it was actually initiated by the Planning Commission and not by any individual sign company or installer, and it is a general text amendment of citywide applications, so we are discussing what regulations we should have that would apply citywide, and on page seven of your report, we have highlighted there the steps that have been taken since the last meeting, and this may not be the most ideal map, we're still working on refining this to get the locations a little more detailed, but this map that is on the screen depicts the location, one of the things that we were trying to get a handle on is how many billboards do we actually have within the city limits of the city of Salina, and our follow-up to that is how many of those are conforming and how many of them are non-conforming. By non-conforming, we mean are they located in zoning districts or locations where a new billboard would not be permitted today. But Dustin, if you want to explain to the commission the symbology on that map and what the different symbols represent?
Sure, so when we did our inventory, we broke it down into two categories as we drove through and around the community to describe the types of signs that we have, that we found. So the blue dots that you see are static advertising signs or billboard signs that are within the city limits. So those would be signs that would be under the jurisdiction of the city of Salina. The pinkish-purple signs that you see along the interstates and on the edges are signs that are actually in the county but are signs that somebody might perceive as being city of Salina billboard signs, but they are actually county billboard signs. And I did a synopsis of them, and in total, we do have 21 that are outside the city limits along I-135 and I-70, and we have another 21 that are scattered throughout the city of Salina. Now, some of these dots, if you count the dots, you won't see 21 dots, and the reason for that is because there are instances where we have multiple billboard signs on a single lot. For instance, as you come in off of Ohio around North Street, you'll notice that there's two billboards right next to each other, and so if this was an interactive map and I could zoom in, you would see that as we zoomed in and got a higher resolution, that there are actually two dots there. For the purposes of this map, it shows based on our scale as one dot, and along Interstate I-135 here, if you can see my cursor, there are actually three consecutive billboards that are associated with the Rolling Hills Zoo and other things that are on the Walker Blue Beacon property. And over here on West Crawford, as you get close to Broadway by the new storage, mini-storage property that was recently developed here a couple of years ago or so, there's another instance where we have multiple billboards right next to each other. So we do have 21 inside the city limits and another 21 that are in close proximity to the city but are actually in the county and would not be the jurisdiction of our regulations.
Thank you.
So the items that we're discussing is one would be, one scenario would be you could have permits to install a new billboard inside the city limits. You could also have a scenario where there's an existing billboard or billboard site and there's a desire to convert that to electronic changeable copy or digital, and from staff's perspective, it's going to be important to take the next step and determine which of these locations are non-conforming, because if they're non-conforming, then you cannot modify them or replace them because they're locations that wouldn't otherwise be permitted. The second item that we did is because the Planning Commission is the initiator of this review, to date, you have only heard comments from Ideatech Media. We have lots of other sign companies who do business within the city of Salina, and they also have an interest in what rules and regulations we may have that relate to electronic changeable copy signs generally, and how then again extending that to electronic changeable copy billboards or advertising signs. So we have identified 10 additional sign companies that we distributed information to about the text amendment discussions in today's hearing. And then the final thing that we have done is we have finalized some of our draft language, which we'd like to go over with you today, and then we have some discussion items that are unresolved, undiscussed issues that we would like to get guidance from you on. And one of those is, the language we have is kind of muddy and not crystal clear, but the Planning Commission has historically taken the position that they did not want to permit electronic changeable copy signs in the C4 Central Business District, and there are no electronic changeable copy signs in the C4 Central Business District. And the Sonic Center has a changeable copy sign, but they are not within the C4 Central Business District. So one of the policy questions for you to consider is whether that should be treated, the downtown core should be treated the same or differently than the other commercial districts. But if we could start with the other one first, Dustin. What we did, you recall our exercise where we went through the temporary sign regulations and talked about the Supreme Court case and the need for content neutrality, and so in this existing section of the ordinance, we had some language in there that allowed changeable copy signs, but only allowed time and temperature signs. And that's not really a defensible distinction, because then you're regulating the sign not based on what it does, but what it says, and it's awfully hard to regulate, tell a bank that they can have time and temperature, but they can't have their interest rates on their sign. So what we've done here is to try to modify what is an existing section, and you'll recall that as a commission, we have worked through electronic changeable copy signs in the U districts for Kansas Wesleyan, in our residential districts for schools and churches, and our public use districts, again, for schools and some public uses. Changeable copy signs would be allowed in our hospital medical districts, and then you'll see the C1, C2, C3, C5, C6, and C7 commercial districts with C4 omitted, at least for now. And then we have added language, which appears in many of our districts, about electronic changeable copy signs being equipped with photocell dimmer or automatic dimmer controls. And so having a language here that would apply across the board through the city, and then it speaks to not having blinking, flashing, rotating, spinning, or dancing signs. And then the final part is existing language. You cannot, you can't put a searchlight or revolving beacon or anything on top of your building, and you can't have signs that emit audible sounds. And so that is not a change, that's existing language. But what we have in here applies and would apply across the board to any electronic changeable copy sign within the city limits, whether it's an on-premise sign or an off-premise sign. So the primary thing that we did is that you, as a commission, worked through a lot of these things in our residential university and public use districts, and this basically takes what you did in those specific districts and applies it across the board throughout the city. So is there anything in there that would jump out at you or not something you would have expected to see based on our? Again, it's consistent with the things that we have that apply to churches that have electronic changeable copy signs, to Kansas Wesleyan, to our public use districts or public facility that might have a changeable copy sign. And then obviously, we have changeable copy signs in our C2, C3, and C5 districts, they're fairly, become fairly standard and common now. So this is not, this is not a substantive change, but it just cleans up this section. It formally said that in the C1 and C2 districts, you could only have time and temperature signs, and it just eliminates that limitation and says you can have electronic changeable copy signs, period.
Commissioners, do you have questions on this verbiage?
I think one thing we would like to do, because we've got this is across-the-board signs, and then we have, the next part will deal with essentially changeable copy billboards, but we may want to, Dustin, you may want to leave that previous one on the screen, and we may want to see if any members of the public or those in the audience have any questions or would like to comment on this language. It's not, it's not really a substantive change, it's just trying to clean up and clarify an existing section. Obviously, we have allowed electronic changeable copy signs for about 10 years, but this section has not really been enforceable with the distinction between time and temperature signs and other signs. So primarily, it eliminates all references to time and temperature signs. And it, currently, we don't allow electronic changeable copy in C4. This continues that, but we want to maybe have further discussion about that.
Would you like those questions now?
Yeah.
Is there anyone here that would have specific questions about the verbiage in this particular exercise? Sir, if you'd like to approach, I need your name and address, please.
Josh Dawson.
Thank you, sir.
And address 2067 Ottawa Road. Your question signs. One of my questions is, you talked about KW, Time and Temperature Tesco Bank. We went through that with Dustin and Downtown Historical Society and stuff. My question is, I guess, we put Time and Temp at Tesco Bank. With this brought up, I know that the Stiefel Theater is trying to possibly do something besides putting up lettering, so my question would be, would this be entitled under the downtown?
There are, and we'll, I mean, it's a good time to discuss that and bring it up. You will, you will see here, the only commercial district where it's not listed there is the C4 Central Business District, and we have had discussions with Stiefel Theater, and we have had discussions with them that it would take some form of text amendment or modification to our sign code to allow them to have a changeable copy sign. And so I have seen two approaches to that. One approach is to simply say, to add C4 to this list and say, if you're First Bank Kansas and you're in C4, you can have a changeable copy sign. If you're Old Chicago or you're a use that's in the downtown, you can have a changeable copy sign. The other approach, which is what the city of Wichita did, is that they prohibit changeable copy signs in their downtown except for theaters. And they allow them for theaters only, and they require that if it's a historic theater, that it be reviewed by the Historic Preservation Commission, or in our case, it be the Heritage Commission. But the two choices would be, we have had discussions with the theater board, they are interested in modifying their marquee or adding something to the wall of the building that would have coming events and those types of things in a changeable copy format. So there's two ways to look at that. And so one option would be to say they're still not allowed generally in C4, but they are allowed for theaters. The other approach is to simply plug in C4 to that list of uses. The Bank of Tesco is not in the C4 district, they're in a district that allows electronic changeable copy signs, so they are not, not part of the core.
But we were only allowed to put Time and Temp up.
You were only allowed to put Time and Temp up because that property's in a C2 district, and what we are fixing or eliminating today is that the former code said all you could do in C1 and C2 is time and temperature, and we're proposing to eliminate that so, because that is content-based and it's not defensible. So this, with this change, the Bank of Tesco or Bennington Bank or any bank that's in a C1 or C2 would be allowed to have a changeable copy sign without limitation as to what it's portraying.
Cool.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Hello.
Hi.
Your name and address, please.
I'm Cindy Proit, 1429 West Fourth Hutchinson. I'm with Luminous Neon Sign Company out of Hutch, and I did just become aware of this late on Friday, and so I haven't had a chance to review at great length. I did talk to one of our project managers, Megan, who deals with the city of Salina quite frequently, just in asking her, you know, do you run into much issue with EMCs? I think we were mostly concerned with just kind of how it was expanding, to make sure that it wasn't thinking of off-premise and billboards only. She said she hadn't had a lot of issues trying to permit electronic message centers in Salina. I think we would be agreeable to either approach that you'd want to take for that C2 area, whether it's something where you allow it just on theaters or whether you allow it to open up a little bit broader, depending on your business needs in that vicinity. But, so I haven't gone real deep into this, but what it sounds like is that you're just really kind of expanding the districts that currently can have the EMCs or clarifying what they can do.
You haven't had any issues with the providing information about dimmer control systems or photocell dimmers or any of those?
No.
That I'm aware of on your installations. Dustin works with those day-to-day, but...
Yeah, and my role with Luminous is I'm a municipal and community coordinator, so I just kind of work with communities across the state as they do their code revisions. And in fact, I'm just on my way back from Overland Park, and that's becoming exceptionally common. And that's something we actually kind of encourage cities to do, is set perimeters that fit their community needs on brightness levels, on hold time. Just so aesthetically, it kind of fits your community, and while allowing businesses to maybe be allowed to have the electronic message centers that they'd like to have to operate. Yeah, and as I said, I haven't gone real deep into this, but one of our project managers who deals here in Salina all the time said she really hasn't had any issues. So as far as I can tell, I think we're good, but I'll go through this a little bit more thoroughly and see if we find anything.
And part two of this is talking about changeable copy signs that would be off-premise at a billboard scale. And that's something we don't presently allow for, but we're discussing.
And I know Ideatech does a lot of that, Luminous does have a lot of static billboards. We, at this time, don't have a lot in the digital billboard type things. And I always think the salespeople are going to come back and just kind of like pull on me, but another thing that the communities are doing besides maybe requiring proof that the sign can be dimmed, that it does have that photocell technology, that it is dimmable, is they also may be getting an affidavit from the owner stating that they understand and will abide by the rules set, that they won't run it at a brighter level. Or some communities, if it's a church or school in a residential area, they may have a period where they're not running it, maybe after 11:00 PM or something of that nature. And so they're actually getting an affidavit from the owner, just basically attesting that we understand there are rules around this and that we will abide by them, just hopefully for the heartache. Try to get it to come into compliance.
Could I ask you one question?
Yeah.
Because you're very familiar, and you've heard the thread about C2 and theater marquee that Mr. Dawson asked, what would be another example of something like that in a C2 district? Because I really can only think of marquises on theaters, but...
Well, as it was stated, if you opened it up further, I suppose you have businesses in that area that also may have an interest, I think you mentioned like Old Chicago, and I'm not familiar enough with that.
We have a lot of what we would describe as projecting signs in the downtown area, meaning that they project out from the front of the building, and so they, you know, one of the reasons, historically, it hasn't worked very well is because you see a lot of those mostly on monument and pole signs, and we only allow pole signs downtown if you have a lot that doesn't have a zero setback building on it. So we don't hardly have any pole or ground signs downtown, but to make the model work downtown, most of the signs would have to be projecting signs that come off the front of the building, and we don't see many of those, and we're not positive if the theater wants to modify their marquee or whether they want to mount a wall sign to the wall of the theater that might have scrolling upcoming events. But have you seen either of those, either projecting signs or wall signs in historic downtowns?
Not a lot. I think probably you'd see more of a wall sign, although I haven't seen that many in historical districts. A lot of times, historical districts will restrict on that. Sometimes when you start talking about a marquee in an older theater, sometimes there is an allowance to do, depending on what kind of allowance is allowed for an EMC. Sometimes it will be, you can do 100% of whatever the signage allowance is, sometimes it'll be 50%. But with marquises, sometimes they will go above and say, okay, we're going to allow 100% EMC coverage of the marquee. That way, they can have the entire canopy that's sticking out covered in that so that they can run messaging about what the upcoming events are, or, you know, just kind of whatever's going on. So haven't seen it a lot, I don't really want to say, and I feel like I'm on the side that shouldn't be creating these limitations, but I haven't seen a lot of historical districts in downtown settings that do EMCs. But that's not to say that it can't be done, it's not to say that you can't do it and put a little bit greater restrictions on it as to the size and kind of how they look. But I think it's mostly because downtowns, obviously, you don't usually have a pole sign and you don't have a monument sign, so a wall sign or in a window is about your only other alternative. And then a lot of places also will not allow scrolling or traveling messages either. And so you can dictate also how it transitions.
Thank you, Ms. Proit.
Okay.
That's very valuable information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Projection sign is like Big Nose Kate's sign is what you're talking about?
Yeah, projecting sign means, you know, in our C4 Central Business District, the buildings come out to the front property line, which means that awnings, signs that are on the face of the building are projecting out over the right of way. So our definition of a projecting sign is it's mounted on the face of the building and it projects... So our definition of a projecting sign is it's mounted on the face of the building and it projects out over the right of way. Because in the downtown setting, you can't really have pole signs, you can't have ground signs. We don't allow for roof signs, so in the downtown area, you primarily see wall signs or signs that are attached to an awning that projects or an individual projecting sign.
And so those are allowed in C two downtown?
The projecting signs are only allowed in the C four central business district. What we don't allow is we don't allow those projecting signs to be electronic changeable copy at this point in time. Historically, we have not and what we have heard is interest from the Stiefel Theater in either modifying their marquee or adding something that would would could have changeable copy to. Identify upcoming events and things of that nature. And so what we're discussing is two options. One is to just allow it across the board in the downtown area. The other option is to maintain the status quo, but allow an exception for theaters.
Are there other questions before we move on to the next draft? Well, thank you very much, everyone.
We can move to the other Dustin to to kind of just give you a a summary of what what we're talking about with um, electronic changeable copy advertising signs. Again, these are these are going to be at a larger scale and the only thing that that we have clarified is um. In the this lead in paragraph, there is language that we've inserted that says to clarify that the area of a billboard or electronic changeable copy billboard shall count towards. The allowable sign square footage allocated to the parcel on which it's located. That that is the rule of thumb today, but we've added that in there just to clarify it. That if you have a parcel of land based on either the building frontage or the street frontage, that site can have X amount of square footage of sign area. And if you as a landowner allow somebody to put up a a billboard or a changeable copy billboard, that sign area counts against what you can put up for your own business. So you can you can put up, you can have a sign and the example would be then on South Ninth Street, there is a Subway restaurant. And on that Subway restaurant site, there's a pole sign for Subway. There's also a pole sign for Office Max, which is an off premise sign because Office Max wanted to have a sign out on Ninth Street. Well, that sign counts against the sign allocation for Subway. It doesn't count towards the sign allocation for the Office Max site. And so if on the Subway site Subway had used up all the available sign area, then the Office Max sign couldn't be there. But that that language is to clarify that if you if a piece of property has a square footage allocation for signs, having a billboard counts towards that. And so if you choose to have a billboard, that may limit the either the size or number of other types of signs you could have. And so we have um, recommended a a sign, a height not to exceed fifty feet along interstates and thirty-five feet in other locations. That's pretty consistent with our um, zoning restrictions on other signs. Um, if you want to keep scrolling, John uh, or Dustin, we've had um, there was interest from Ideatech Media to reduce. The buffer from two hundred feet to one hundred feet, but as we have compared with communities across the board that we've looked at, one hundred feet just doesn't seem like much of a buffer. But that that would be a policy choice for you. And then um, the same thing goes with the separation. They they suggested or recommended a reduction to of a five hundred foot separation between those types of signs. And we don't think our thousand foot is is that unreasonable. And then we have um, suggested a sign limitation of four hundred square feet on the interstates and three hundred square feet. Um, in other locations for a maximum size. And if you wanted to keep going Dustin, um, some of the. We have tried to write a prescriptive ordinance that sets out the ground rules for time, place and manner of having electronic changeable copy billboards. Representatives of Ideatech suggested that instead of trying to address specific size, height, location requirements. One option would be to just say you can't put one up without a conditional use permit, which would require an application, a public hearing and a decision by the planning commission. Our only concern about that is if you take that approach and you don't have some size, height, locational requirements, you run the risk of having decisions that aren't consistent or aren't defensible. And could be viewed as arbitrary and so we want to avoid that. But uh, certainly an option, one option would be to say that the only time you can put up a digital billboard is if. Um, you get a conditional use permit approved by the planning commission for the location. That is an option. Some other communities, instead of looking at it in the zoning districts across the board, they have said, we're going to create. An outdoor advertising overlay district and you can only have advertising signs in those locations. An example of that is Newton, Kansas, where the only place you can have them is within three hundred feet of I one thirty-five and three hundred feet of U S Highway fifty. And if you're outside those areas, you cannot install it. So that that would be an alternative approach. And then the the more limiting approach would, instead of going to the work of creating an overlay district would just be to say, the only place that you can have a changeable copy advertising sign is within three hundred feet of an interstate federal or state highway. And for Salina, we only have as a state highway, uh, K one forty-three, which runs from I seventy to the north city limits where Ninth Street is. Other than that, we don't have any state routes or federal routes inside the city limits. So that would essentially limit them to the interstate areas. So those are different approaches to what um, we have been discussing to date. Um, but we wanted to walk through with the commission, these kind of remaining items and just get a consensus from you. In our draft, we don't have a minimum lot size that says in order to have a billboard. Um, your lot has to have X number of square feet. I think we talked about fifteen thousand square feet, we talked about twenty thousand square feet. That is an option to add if you think that's important. I can't remember Dustin, what we came up with um, for the billboard that is at Front and Ash Street. Um, but I can tell you that that lot where the billboard is is pretty much a postage stamp lot. The lot might have like between three and four thousand square feet. And what occurred there was we had a windstorm and it it had two billboards on it and the windstorm blew one of the billboards off the property into Ash Street. And they were not allowed to replace it because the billboard's size exceeded what that lot would allow, not based on lot size, but on square footage. So um, if there is interest on the commission and if there's a consensus that it ought to be fifteen or twenty thousand square feet or what you think's appropriate, we could add that. Um, as was discussed in our residential districts, if you are a church or a school and you have a changeable copy sign. You have to shut that sign off at ten P M. But that only applies in residential districts. The sign that's at Midway in Ohio has to shut down at ten P M. The sign on the back of Kansas Wesleyan's scoreboard has to shut down at ten P M. Um, our other changeable copy signs like at banks and other places that are in commercial districts, those do not have time limits on them. But that is one thing that it is a time, place and manner restriction. Um, the other thing is um, and I'd never, I guess I'd not not seen them and and maybe some of our sign installers can tell us whether it's feasible or not. The sign that's at Midway in Ohio is what we call a double faced sign. If you are driving north on Ohio, you see it. If you're driving south on Ohio, you see it because it's a double face sign. Some of the representatives from Ideatech were talking about having billboards that are only single face signs. So one of the things um, we would want impact input from you is um. Do we want, if you want to allow for them, do you want to limit it to a single side or is double faced acceptable? The other thing I have um, I've only issued three billboard permits since I've worked here, but one of them was for a stacked billboard that's out on I seventy. And by stacked, it means it has a single pole with a billboard and then a second billboard on top of the first billboard on a single pole. So um, if you, if we want to be, so the scenario is if you have a fifty foot height limit, conceivably you could get two signs into that fifty foot limit. But if you don't want to allow for double stacked signs, you can direct us accordingly and we would make sure in our draft that those are not allowed for. And then the other thing we talked about that the city of Wichita has recognizing that there may be circumstances where. A a two hundred foot buffer is not reasonable or practical or there may be a situation where having signs closer than a thousand feet apart is not undesirable. And so one option that we have is I would call it a safety valve or just another option for owners or sign companies. That if they have a location and they think it's a highly suitable location and it just happens to be within two hundred feet of a residential zoning district or a thousand foot of another sign. Then having a special review process would be like a conditional use permit. It would allow a sign company to apply to the planning commission, to have a public hearing, notice to the neighbors and for you to decide. As a body, whether a sign that's closer than two hundred feet from a residential area or closer than a thousand feet from another sign should be approved. And if you think having a safety valve like that would be beneficial, uh, then we can include that. And then of course, that's the last question there, the policy question of um, should we allow electronic changeable copy, not necessarily advertising signs, but any type of electronic changeable copy signs in the C four district. So we can take them in any order that you want, but we would welcome any feedback you have on minimum lot sizes, stacking, um, double face. Signs, whether you think there should be across the board, uh, time limits on operation. Um, those are all things that are not included in our draft, but we would, we wanted to at least ask the question.
And the purpose, Mr. Andrew, would be to prepare a draft?
To prepare what we would call a final, final draft that we could say, this is the best we can do, we've covered all the bases. And we've we've tried to build this and get input as we've gone along. Um, but the before we call it our final best draft, we thought we should at least walk through these discussion items and get your thoughts on those.
And that draft would be then presented prior to the upcoming meetings?
Correct.
And then we would have more discussion about that draft?
That would be the the draft that we would say this, this is what's up for a vote.
But at this point, we would need to actually specify what we feel in regard to these discussion items.
Since these items are not specifically in the draft that we have put forth to this time. These are things that staff came up with that we could address in a final draft based on what input we receive. Um, both from the planning commission and from those sign companies that are here in attendance that might have thoughts about it.
So commissioners, I think the easiest way, if we just start with the first one, however, it would we rather hear if the public has a response to the question before we have dialogue and discussion on it?
Yeah, I think.
I think I would rather, I would like their opinion before before we just decide amongst ourselves what we think is appropriate.
That's the purpose of the public.
Perfect, perfect, because in that case then, ladies and gentlemen, we're talking about establishing a minimum lot size for these lots. And I don't know how familiar you are with lot size, but I happen to be in real estate, so I'm very familiar with it. But we have very irregular parcels around the city, some are very small, some are very large. Uh, fifteen thousand square feet, twenty thousand square feet is is larger than a typical building lot, sometimes depending on where it is in town. So do any of you have any opinion on that subject on whether or not there should be a minimum lot size? If if not, I'll bring it back up to the commissioners, we have discussed this somewhat. It was my opinion that there should be because we had some small lots that were questioned. But Mr. Story, obviously you would have a background in in that too. Yes, you've done everything. You've done everything, you're you're a man of all trades and do you think there should be a minimum lot size?
Yeah, I think so.
Do you have a specific idea?
No, but they were doing that one on um, Speedy Cash.
Mm-hmm.
That was attached to the building, as I recall.
I don't know what size that lot is though. Um, I don't know how many square feet it would be.
And it it's not, it's not intended to be arbitrary, but what we have is if you are in a residential zone and you want to have a nursing home or a group care facility or a church or a school. You cannot have it unless your lot contains fifteen thousand square feet. And so fifteen thousand square feet is, that would be considered large for a residential lot, but it would not be considered large for an institutional or commercial.
Exactly.
Or industrial site. So the idea being that if you had a minimum lot size, you would not see a billboard at the corner of Front and Ash on a lot that contains thirty-five hundred square feet. Because it doesn't meet the minimum lot size requirement. So um, we can, um, we had come up originally with the idea of fifteen thousand square feet just because that's what you need to have, to have some sort of institutional use that would allow an electronic changeable copy sign at all.
And I think that's a great place to start because it's justification for what we're talking about. Does anyone think it should be larger?
Central High School put up that sign that there is on Crawford Street.
Well, that's definitely more than fifteen thousand square feet.
But not the sign.
Right, 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 but if they had a small lot, that's what we're talking about.
Site, Central High's campus is thirty-nine acres.
Yeah.
So um, that that would more than meet the minimum size.
Right.
But again, that um, the size of that sign was, it is not a an advertising or or billboard sign, but we we already have regulations that that cover. That that relate to those signs for schools. South High is proposing a similar type of sign, but what we're talking about is a minimum square footage of a site to support a billboard. Not not just any electronic changeable copy sign. So again, my example is that that lot at Ash and Front that has a billboard on it only has thirty-five hundred square feet and the billboard. only has thirty-five hundred square feet and the billboard occupies almost the entire lot. So, um, ha- having, having a minimum lot size would avoid the situation where you might have a billboard that would be all out of proportion with the size of the lot that it's on.
Exactly. So, if we are thinking a minimum of fifteen thousand, like, is there, is there a feeling that we need to go higher or do we let staff resolve this? Obviously, they've, they've done their research and, and know what's standard. And I think the fifteen thousand square feet is a basis that makes sense and has justification.
And, and that sign though could be thirty-five feet tall. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. But a regular sign could be thirty-five feet tall. Again, we're, we're talking about an off-premise sign. But as, as a general rule on our commercial lots, a pole sign can be thirty, thirty-five feet in height. All the signs along South Ninth Street are thirty-five feet in height.
Then you can use that information?
Okay.
Uh, so our next point, setting time limits on the operate-
We have a public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I don't know, do I have to-
Could you please approach? You, I'm sorry, or you'll have to move up closer so that you're easy access.
I feel like you're stating this, is that it, this is referencing billboard signs only, not-
Right.
-any standard E M C. And just if, if for sure in, in code, it could be written with, to clarify that it is billboard.
It is advertising signs only, not, advertising signs is our word for off-premise.
Okay.
Or it's our word for billboard, but it would not, there is no minimum lot size for electronic changeable copy.
Okay.
Sign.
And I, I fully understand you to be saying that. I just want to make sure that when it's written, it, it is-
We're, we're-
Just in case you ever decide to retire and this still exists, that everyone knows what, what was meant.
It's only referring to sites for electronic changeable copy, advertising signs or billboards, not, not the other types.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, then we'll move on to setting time limits. Um, obviously, we've done that before, so-
The, the concern there would be that, um, if you, we don't, we don't have time limits on other types of electronic changeable copy signs. So, um, I'll just use myself and as an example, I'm a neighbor to the new sign at Comm Care. It's an electronic changeable copy sign. It's on all night. And there's no regulation that says that it has to be turned off at ten P M because it's not in a residential district. But we have, we have a sign, um, I'm trying, it's Belmont Christian. On Belmont has an electronic changeable copy sign. It's in a residential district. That sign has to shut off at ten P M.
Are there any policies regarding districts of border, residential, just, uh, obviously like the Comm Care situation?
Comm Care borders residential, but that, at presently, that does not apply. And our concern would be that if you have an electronic changeable copy sign, billboard, and you allow it and it's installed on I one thirty-five, it doesn't make a lot of sense to require that billboard to be turned off at ten P M. So, we think that if you have sufficient buffers or separation requirements that keep these types of signs away from residential areas, then the need for time limits isn't there.
Is the, uh, is the Comm Care sign, what, two-hundred feet from a residential district?
No, it is, um, there's a home right at the corner of Wayne in Ohio. It's actually not right on the corner, but one, one home back. And so, that, that's probably a little less than two-hundred feet away from that sign.
So, it'd possibly, if we extended the buffer in a situation like that?
Right.
It, that house would be within that buffer zone?
And, um, it, it didn't, it didn't come to pass, but I did have conversations with an individual that wanted to purchase, um, the vacant Ellie Ritter property across from the Bennington State Bank and threw, put up three electronic changeable copy billboards there. That would not, under this, that would not be permitted because it's less than two-hundred feet away from residential property. So, that, regardless of what it was zoned, it would not be an eligible location. So, I guess our, our view is if you protect residential areas with a buffer, then the need, um, for having a, a shut-off time. And it, when you're, have travelers on the interstate, they're traveling at all hours and it doesn't seem to be a feasible approach to say, you've got this changeable copy sign on I one thirty-five, we're going to have you shut it off at ten o'clock.
And that would be my reason for discouraging reducing the buffer from two-hundred feet to one-hundred feet as suggested by Ideatech.
I, I don't think, uh, that's far enough.
That could be.
It should be three-hundred feet.
Okay, hold on, hold that thought a second because let's, before we get off the, the topic of actually time limits, um, I wanted to ask anyone in the audience if you have questions or thoughts about time limits. Yes, sir? If you could approach your name and address, please, and then we'll talk a little more about the buffer.
Eric Redwing, two-three-four-four-three Hall Road, Sedalia, Missouri.
Thank you, sir.
Wait Outdoor Advertising.
Thank you.
So, as far as your, uh, what, what was on time limits?
Time limits.
I don't feel that they should be shut down. Um, hotels are clients, twenty-four-hour gas stations, um, rely on those signs for, for traffic.
And in proximity to the residential districts?
As far as that goes, I actually live in Sedalia. We have a three-hundred-foot-
Three-hundred?
Regulation and it is, you can't put up a billboard anywhere in that town. So, essentially, if you're driving down, let's say, Fifty Highway and it's got all commercial, well, there's houses behind all those commercial buildings and you can't get a billboard in anywhere because it's three-hundred feet. But it is a buffer, you know?
Exactly. And so, you, you're suggesting no time limit and you're agreeing that a three-hundred-foot buffer is-
Too much.
Too much. So, what, 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 what would you suggest?
I agree with Glenn Hillson, Ideatech. I worked with Glenn for ten years. Um, two-hundred feet is reasonable. I think you should have a, a clause in there where you could apply for a variance, uh, through a public meeting.
And you are a sign vendor, right?
I am.
Yeah, yeah. Perfect. Other thoughts?
Um-
On these two topics?
I don't know, I'm not, um, really fluent in Kansas laws, but I know Missouri does not allow stackable signs. I don't recommend that. Um, as far as your guys' how the digital signs change, um, it's automatic. State regulations are automatic. They're not allowed to fade or scroll or text. Just a couple of things there. And then also, one other thing I wanted to address, and I don't think you guys have quite got to it, but is the size limitation, uh, along I seventy and I thirty-five. As far as the square footage is four-hundred square feet on seventy and then I one thirty-five, I am actually taking down a four-hundred-square-foot sign on I seventy in Bonner Springs because nobody will buy it because it's too small at seventy-five miles an hour. We're moving it to a fifty-five mile an hour zone, so.
So, what are they replacing it with, sir?
We're going to replace it back with fourteen by forty-eight. The standard billboard size, six-hundred and seventy-two.
Six-hundred and-
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two. And that would be fourteen by forty-eight?
Correct, which is standard.
For a high, for-
For a billboard.
For high-speed traffic?
Yes.
So, you're suggesting that if you want to scroll back, Dustin, we were talking about a, um, four-hundred-foot maximum along the interstate. Um, I guess that's right there in six, Dustin. So, you're suggesting that you think for an interstate-oriented sign that that's too small?
I do. The standard is six-hundred and seventy-two square feet. Um, I am, I am in agreeance with your three-hundred and, three-hundred square feet for your, your city locations. Um, your traffic travels at forty miles an hour or twenty-five. That is plenty sufficient for that, so.
Does anyone have questions?
I'm happy to help if I can.
Yeah, hold on just a second, we'll see if there's any question for you.
I was wondering why you didn't care for the double stack?
It's more of a distraction, um, having, trying to read two different faces, two different advertisements at one time.
I was thinking you'd get it over with at one time.
You can, yes.
But, yeah, I see what you're saying, right.
Any other questions for, I'm sorry, sir, what was your last name?
Redwing.
Redwing. Any other questions for Mr. Redwing? And we might need you back.
Thank you.
So, sit tight. Um, so, we had one more thing thrown in there, which was size. So, before we forget where we're at, the, the comments there were that we did not need to set limits, so we'll need to discuss that, that the buffer at three-hundred feet would be too great, but two-hundred would be acceptable. And finally, then we got to the topic of highway sizes. So, let's talk about buffer again because that's where we started. Two-hundred was, I think, our suggestion. One-hundred was Ideatech. Three-hundred's a possibility. I heard from commissioners, one million. So, what direction do we want to give staff on this?
Well, uh, how many homes are within three-hundred feet of the interstate?
Uh, probably very few homes within three-hundred feet of the interstate. Having homes within three-hundred feet of an arterial street like Crawford or Ohio are, are those, that would be what we're talking about, not, not interstate signs. But if you're, um, if you're talking about a street like Crawford Street or a street like Ohio or even to a degree Broadway, it's not going to be uncommon to have houses within three-hundred feet of the arterial street. It would be a little less common to have them within two-hundred feet just because of the depth of the lot. But even so, if you went up and down Ohio Street, most of the homes that are in the neighborhoods off of Ohio Street, there is less than two-hundred feet of depth, um, for the commercial areas. So, the, um, that, that two-hundred-foot, we, we suggested two-hundred-foot because that is a commonly accepted, it's, it's what we use for our public hearing notifications. It's, it's a common buffer for other types of things, for cell towers and things like that. So, um, we do like the idea because you can't write a code that one-size-fits-all. We do think that having a, if we come down on two-hundred feet, um, then we think having a special review process that allows, um, sign companies to apply for approval on a case-by-case basis is, is a good safety valve. If you make it three-hundred feet, you're going to be really busy because you're just going to increase the number of cases that will come before you. But, I mean, my, my example would be, you've got Ohio Street and Wayne. You have the Bennington State Bank there. You have this vacant lot that's across the street that happens to be zoned C one for office use, but that lot is not two-hundred feet deep. And so, if, if someone said, I want to rezone that lot and I want to put up electronic changeable copy billboards on it, we are not going to issue a permit for it, even if it was zoned correctly because it's less than two-hundred feet from a residential area. If someone says, well, notwithstanding that, I still want to apply to the planning commission, then there's going to be notice sent to all the neighbors, there's going to be a public hearing. There, there would be all of that. But, um, if you're not going to have time limits, then I think you, you use the buffer as a protection instead of the time limit.
So, if the sketch at this point looks like there were no time limits and the buffer was a minimum of two-hundred feet with, uh, with a special review process also available, is there a consensus that that would meet our needs given the fact that there is justification for those numbers and decisions without being extreme? Yes, Commissioner Jackson?
Um, I'm, I, I'm not sure of myself at all here because I can't visualize. If I were standing in the backyard of a house that is, um, in that two-hundred buffer, that is, you know, taking that into account, how, how a thirty-foot sign is that likely or thirty-five-foot sign?
Mm-hmm. It's not so much the height, it's the, the billboards. The, the sign at Comm Care is, I don't know, roughly, the electronic portions like forty to fifty square feet.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you're talking about, if it's a true electronic changeable copy billboard and the entire sign face is electronic, then it's, it's going to be five times the size of the electronic changeable copy part of the Comm Care sign. But you're all, you're all welcome to come to my backyard and you can see how the Comm Care sign will, how that, that does spill.
I would like to see.
And, and I'm about, I'm about five-hundred feet from the Comm Care sign. But I will be honest that both the new halogen streetlights, the lights at Comm Care in their parking lot that are left on all night and the stoplight at Wayne in Ohio all cast more light into my backyard than the changeable copy sign does. The changeable copy sign is not, is not the biggest light spill thing there. The, the light poles that are for the parking lot that are left on all night and that brighter halogen streetlights that are at that corner provide more illumination than the changeable copy sign does.
I don't think illumination is the only issue though. For me, if it were my backyard and I looked at a sign, I think I, you know, I didn't sign up to, to live in a central city really. Uh, it's a, it's a housing area. Um, is that, is just seeing the sign, um, a problem to you or your neighbors?
No, because I, I'd said again, when West Star changed out, all the street, the streetlights there are about three times brighter than they were with the old mercury lights. And so, that, that, the streetlight puts out a lot more lumens than a, a changeable copy sign does, so.
But I think Ms. Jackson is saying, is the sign itself offensive to you? Not the light, not the-
Yeah.
Not any of that, just the fact that there is a thirty-foot sign or whatever the dimensions are?
Even in the daytime, you know, before, yeah.
Of course, he lives next to a commercial district. I mean, you could obviously choose to live in another neighborhood. Um, but he lives just a block or so off of, of high-traffic-
A block off of Ohio, so.
Yeah, a high-traffic commercial street.
That's my choice. I knew I lived a block off Ohio when I bought the house, so.
I think another good example is where my house is, at, you know, Ninth and Crawford in, on Highland. We have a gigantic, what is that, a car wash and, and, oh, I mean, that's, that's huge, you know? There's huge signs, there's huge everything there. Now, do we actually notice it on Highland? Not really. Um, do I like it there? Not particularly, but it's very convenient. So, um, there's a lot of elements there that come into play. But two-hundred feet, for example, would be all of the houses on Highland behind it, um, south of it, at least three houses and across the street. So, um, two-hundred feet spills way out into neighboring lots.
You're saying adequate?
I'm saying probably. I believe that the technology is changing and more controlled, you know, um, than it used to be. I guess I'd rather have changeable copy dig- billboard sort of thing or like the thing in front of Central School than I'd rather, than have a billboard with those big lamps on them, like, you know, they used to have. Um, I don't know. But at this point, what we're talking about is, first of all, whether there should be time limits. Uh, second of all, um, whether or not we need the buffer zone to be a certain size. So, time limits, that's where we were at initially. Uh, is it common to do this, to set a time limit on things that aren't off-premise or off-
We, I have to go to my, my table that's in your, my table that's in your, your packet there. But the Kansas City, Kansas, and Lincoln, Nebraska, were the only communities we found that had across the board, or what we interpreted to be across the board, time limits. For Lincoln, Nebraska, it was twelve AM, for Kansas City, Kansas, eleven PM. But none of the other communities we researched had time limits on electronic changeable copy signs, or particularly with illuminated billboards. So it was not a common practice to have across the board time limits. And again, we already have time limits on illuminated signs in residential districts. But, so if a church or a school's in a residential district, there's a ten foot cutoff time for their illuminated sign. But if you're in a commercial district or industrial district, there's no cutoff time, even if you're close to residential.
Would there be any practical way to calculate how much electricity would be saved in the city if we set everything goes off at midnight, or whatever arbitrarily we decide? That might be an issue at some point, certainly our emissions are not going down, here's a chance to cut them some.
I don't think there's a practical way to do that. I would, with the, the changing technology and the, the types of lighting that's now being used, it's much more energy efficient than it was in the past.
But we don't know how much that is, and whether it's significant enough to even make it as an argument.
The, I mean, certainly the reason to have time limits is to, is primarily focused on light spill, and not, not necessarily on, on electricity consumption. But we, in our research, we did not find many communities that had across the board time limits on changeable copy billboards. So we, we found buffers to be quite common, and we found buffers in a wide variety, but our, our two hundred feet fits within the norm. And, and again, Wichita has a three hundred foot buffer, but then they have their special review process that allows for applications to be submitted that are closer than three hundred.
So I want to guess remind everyone that what we're talking about is establishing a draft that will then be reviewed, we'll hear from others, we would probably want to do that, not at the minimums, would be my, my feeling about this. So this would be an example where if we were to go with a three hundred foot buffer with a conditional use process, I guess there's a chance that it can be reduced later on, or we can go with a smaller one. But we're going to need to give some kind of direction to staff.
You're not pre-committing yourself, but we want to get to a point to say, this, this is our, we don't want to leave any base untouched.
Right, exactly. So if we're going to do that, which way we're leaning? Are we leaning towards moderate, extreme? I mean, I'm personally sitting in the moderate seat, I guess, because I feel like, I'm very attuned to Commissioner Jackson's philosophy about energy usage, but again, I feel like smart lighting has come to the point that it's, it's pretty smart. I've had my house six years and never changed a light bulb yet, because it's all smart, it's all smart. So it must work, knock on wood. What, some thoughts here, so we can move forward. We still have several other topics here. So we're back to minimum lot size, buffer zone, setting time limits. I think we agreed to fifteen thousand dollars, or fifteen thousand square feet for minimum lot size. Hold on, come on up, and I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, I think two hundred.
Two hundred square feet, yes, sir, your name and address, please.
Gary Gleason, nine twenty-one South Third, Gleason Signs. I think when you're talking about the buffer zone, I think when you're getting up to the three hundred foot mark, and you're going to ask for a variance, if you can, to, to beat that, then I think they're going to be awful busy with variances.
I agree, I agree.
And anytime somebody goes in, they're probably going to have to try to beat that three hundred foot mark. So I think if you go to the two hundred foot mark right now, and try to set that, and then if it doesn't work, you can go to something else. Maybe you can even go to a variance even from there. But I think three hundred foot, you're getting quite a ways out, and you're going to have a bunch of sign companies coming in going for variances. And I think they're going to be really busy trying to take care of those, and instead of having maybe just a two hundred foot. And you're trying, you're kind of getting in the middle of the far out and the too close. So you're, I think, I think the two hundred foot should be something you should really think about.
Any thought on timing?
I think the timing, I think the way they've got it set up right now is good. Ten o'clock for the, the areas that had, that should be shut off, which ten o'clock doesn't make any difference to those people, anyway. But when you get to the, the bigger locations that have to use the twenty-four hour periods, they need that. And the electricity, I don't think, is a problem when you figure the price of the signs and stuff. They don't think of electricity as much as they do what that sign's going to bring into them.
Sure, but we also, you know, I understand that, I guess, but that they may not consider the electric cost, but we want to consider the electric usage nonetheless. So timing, so you think the two hundred square foot buffer zone would be appropriate with the twenty-four hour runtime?
Yes, I think it would.
I hate to bring this up, but it sure would make a difference if the sign was six foot high or thirty-five foot high. And we don't have any regulations about this.
Well, we have a maximum.
Yeah, when you have a maximum in a certain location, you know.
But if we have a minimum, if we, if the sign is at six foot, the buffer may only be a hundred foot. If it's at thirty-five feet, it might be three, should be.
No, no one's going to put up a six foot tall billboard, because no one will see it.
Is the billboard on Ohio and, well, it's, it's only twelve foot, maybe?
What is the average height here, do you know?
Well, like I say, on the interstate, the typical is a fourteen by forty.
But how tall is it, how high off the ground?
On the interstate, they're about fifty foot.
And how high in town are these signs? Like, like Martinelli's signs, and those signs along Crawford, for example? Thirty feet?
And so, but you get into where you're going to start trying to get your signs lower, then you're just going to get into a lot more work, I think, for the city, trying to figure out where they're going to put all this stuff. I think they've got it pretty well settled in, as far as the signs, that, the commercial signs and everything right now. I think it's just these billboards that's, that's causing the, the changes right now. And like I say, I think the two hundred foot buffer, I think that would be fair. The three hundred, I think there would be a lot of trying to get changes in that. And I think you've got to be fair with, with both the city and, and the sign companies. And two foot, two hundred foot, I think, would be.
Well, while you're standing there, stacked billboards, since we heard from Mr. Redwing on that, his, he wasn't in favor of that.
Stacked billboards?
I don't think any of us probably are.
No, I don't think there should be.
Double backed, back to back?
Back to backs, yes, stacked, no. For the main reason, if you get two billboards stacked on top of each other, you're going to be looking at two different messages, and it's going to be a lot of confusion.
If you have back to back, my presumption is the two hundred feet is running both sides of the face advertised on. Isn't, wouldn't that be the case?
Correct.
So like the ones on Crawford, of like, by the railroad track, by Dylan's. Those have two sides, I assume, so two hundred feet would go east, west.
And also from the ends.
And from the ends, north, south.
Yeah, and so, and usually it's from the ends is where you're going to get it. But if you go the two hundred foot on both sides, you know, they can, if they have a problem with one side, they, they'd use a single face. You know, that's just something they'll have to, you play around with to get to where they want to go on it.
But you're in favor of back to back and double faced?
Well, if I'm putting a sign up, and I want to get the most out of it, yes, it would be.
It's like having a front door and a back door, right? Either way, you have to walk around the house. Perfect, any other thoughts?
No.
Any questions for Mr. Gleason, while we've got him here for the moment? Thank you, sir. Okay, well, so we've pretty much covered every topic on here, except whether to allow them in the C four Central Business District, which came up in conversation a couple of different ways.
And we're not talking about billboards in the C four, but electronic changeable copy that we presently do not allow for.
So are we reaching any kind of direction to guide staff in writing this draft?
Could we review what we?
Well, the review is, the minimum lot size would be a minimum of fifteen thousand square feet, correct me if I'm wrong. The, there would be no time limits on the operation of these things, except of course, in the districts where they are required to have time, right, school, I think you said. We would allow double faced, back to back signs, we would not allow stacked billboards. We would have a special review process, so those people that wanted to attempt some kind of signage outside the two hundred foot buffer zone could do so through that process. And that is a review of everything regarding the billboard issue. That is a different, that's not actually in this series, but yes, that, that was another thing that came up.
I will say for your benefit that, and I, I can't speak to it in application, but in KDOT's regulations on the interstate, they will, their maximum size is nine hundred square feet.
So six seventy-two is that big?
Six seventy-two would not, I mean, if, for, if it's limited to the interstate applications, I don't, I don't think that's out of line, and so we could certainly modify that.
I just feel like if we're going to hear from all of the companies and such later on, we're going to have everyone come back and say the same thing, that six seventy-two would be the appropriate size. If, if Mr. Redwing says that, I'm sure they will too, and, and Ms. Poet, right, says that.
Right, and, and this is a little out of our normal scope, but, but yeah, I would agree. And as you said, when you go too small, it actually makes it dangerous for the driver.
So in those cases, I think we'll hear it all again, and we'll end up there. So I'd say be fair, six seventy-two for highway, high trap, or high speed traffic on interstate.
But not inside the city, on city streets.
Inside three hundred, correct? So besides the issue of C four, electronic, that is kind of where we're sitting for this preliminary draft to be drafted, so it can be proposed, and we can continue to have dialogue on it.
And what's the thinking about C four?
That would, well, let's, then let's say that, okay, we're going to table that as it is. So yeah, so that's good, like, that's, we're, we're okay there. C four, the thinking in C four would be whether or not we want to allow electronic changeable copy advertising in C four.
So let's just look at it this way, if you're on, and I, Bennington State Bank at Ohio in Belmont, that is zone C two, neighborhood shopping, they are allowed to have an electronic changeable copy sign. Bank six is zone C three, they can have an electronic changeable copy sign. Bank of Teskett is outside the Central Business District, they can have an electronic changeable copy sign. First Bank Kansas on Santa Fe is in the Central Business District, and presently, they cannot have an electronic changeable copy sign. Sunflower Bank at Ash and North Fifth Street is in the C four Central Business District, and they may not have an electronic changeable copy sign. So the policy question is, do you open up C four, the Central Core Business District, and treat it the same as the other commercial districts where you can have an electronic changeable copy sign for your business? Or what we saw with the City of Wichita, is they do not permit them in their Central Core Business District, but they have an exception that allows theaters to have an electronic changeable copy sign. And so tho- those are the, those are the two examples that we have seen. And to date, the only party that has approached city staff about having a changeable copy sign that's in the Central Business District is the Stiefel Theater.
I think it's a given that theaters have them in any district, and I can't imagine, I've never been in a city, I can't think of the one that didn't have one, not a theater. But there's a lot of issues here with our downtown because of our design standards, and isn't, there's a design, there's a design review board. So that comes into play too, because I had to get my tiny little sign approved, which isn't changeable, it doesn't do anything, it's about that big. So I had to come to a hearing for it.
Whether it's a mini sign or a marquee sign.
Did you need a little light sign?
It still has to be reviewed.
Yeah, so these would have to be reviewed also, even if we were to say that they were allowed.
Allowed them, they would still have to be reviewed and approved by the design review board. Or the Harets Commission, because the Stiefel Theater is a national register historic property.
But given that, I still would, my personal opinion would be, at this point, to not allow them, except for on theaters. But that is a personal opinion. Given our downtown and the, the, the tone that we're trying to keep there, and I don't sit on that board or anything, but my office is downtown. So I, that's my personal opinion, though. I think we're being very moderate and lenient in the other areas, but I don't know that we need to just be like, boom, put them everywhere.
What were you going to say?
No, I just, all the downtown, you know, you got like Vern Jewelers and, and places like that, that they just have a sign. I can't imagine why anybody would want to have a changeable coffee sign other than a theater. That just seems superfluous to me, that's just kind of a, is that right, you guys? I don't know that you'd sell, Nancy or Gleason or you guys would sell any changeable coffee signs downtown. I just can't imagine, that's a.
We would if we could.
Well, that's a little bit of our fear. There's, there's, there's two sides to that, that, right? A fear is that everyone would suddenly put one up, but they would still have to go through the design review process. Exactly, exactly. And I think that could defeat a lot of the other work that's been done in the past. But that's, again, my personal opinion, not, not anything I'm trying to force on anyone. But if we were to lean that way, and we're agreeable about the other things, as well as six hundred and seventy-two square feet, I think the information is there for staff to begin this process. And then when we hear from more people, when we have more information, I don't know, maybe I'll change my mind about some things. But I think that would be the moderate approach, keeping in mind everybody's needs and purposes.
I, I think we've gotten quite a bit of guidance today. What our plan would be is to go back, incorporate all these things, get it to our legal staff, to get it into proper ordinance form. We would redistribute it back to these same groups before the August twenty-first hearing, and hope to have some recommendation out of this body at that point in time. So before we close the hearing, the public hearing, I think we should just see if there's any more comments or feedback from the public.
Before we do close this, I want to give you that opportunity, because you've heard what we've said now, and I, if you have other thoughts or other feelings, I would like to hear them now. So the mic's right there, please approach.
Speak now, forever hold your peace.
We'll be doing a lot more dialogue and discussion with this in the community, and with, with other members of your industry. But now, you may have But now, you may have other thoughts for us.
Well, this is one of those that is just probably better left alone. But when you're talking about the comm care sign, or you're talking about some of the billboards, I guess I was wondering, can you not differentiate between the highway zone billboards versus the, the more in-town billboards? And if you do have heartburn about them running all night, maybe as opposed to going dark at ten PM, maybe they just go static. I don't think that would be appropriate for some of the highway billboards. I mean, one, they're oriented towards the highway. They're not, they're not meant to be seen by the residential areas along there. And they are very expensive and they do have a purpose and, and traffic is out there at all hours of the night. So I, I feel like interstate is much different than, than something sitting in the middle of town. But that was just a thought, as opposed, you know, which right now you're leaning towards not limiting. So that's, that's great and fine. I just thought, if that gives you heartburn, there is that potential to say, okay, at a certain hour, instead of having it continuing to flash messages, maybe it just goes static. And some, sometimes even churches and schools in residential areas, that's what some towns go to, is as opposed to going dark, it just goes static. And so it's just like any other lit sign. So, that's, that's all I had.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Redwing?
The only problem with going static is, what if you have six advertisers on your digital? So only one person gets to display overnight. That's one issue I see.
You'd like a kick walk.
As far as light pollution, I do have some information on this stuff that I did with the city of Leavenworth. I have some light studies from the dark sky, dark sky standards. I don't know if anybody's familiar.
In terms of energy usage or spillage?
Yes, and pollution. So I have some gra, some charts and stuff that I could send to you guys.
Maybe you can share those with us.
I don't have it with me now, but I could email that stuff to you.
We can get you dust, or I can get you our card, so you could send that stuff to us.
I can say, we have a twelve by thirty digital in Leavenworth. And if you're standing five feet away from it, holding a candle, that's how bright that sign is away from you.
How much energy does it use?
I would, I can pull the electric bill. I can tell you, a fourteen forty-eight, six hundred and seventy-two square feet, ten years ago, cost about six hundred dollars a month to run. I put one in in January, it cost about two hundred and seventy-five dollars a month to run.
Do they all run off electrical power? Do they use solar, or is there, are there other usage?
They're all, they're all run off electrical, yeah. No solar.
What was the second figure you stated?
For consumption?
Yes.
From six hundred, ten years ago, to two seventy-five a month.
And that's a result of the type of bulb? Or technology, or energy cost, or it's, it's?
New technology, yeah. Ten years ago, they would, you know, now they don't have fans on them. They had a lot of fans that had to cool these things years ago, and they've done away with those. So, for the most part. And we do, we can control our billboards from our computer. I can control ours from my phone. If something goes wrong, they can be shut down. If somebody calls us, we can shut it down. We can dim it. We did have to meet pretty tough standards to get our sign in in Leavenworth. In fact, there's an intersection right there, and the lights at that intersection are brighter than our sign. And this sign is out in the middle of nowhere. So, it's, it's not very bright, if that helps.
I think it's not so much bright in our, it's big. I think we're more attuned to big as a commissioner.
I do understand that.
We're not so much about, we understand the bright thing. We've worked through the process and we've seen the examples and we've put them up. But our discussions tend to go towards size and, and magnitude and presence. You know, and whether or not they're actually appropriate where they're placed, given the size of the community, the size of surrounding buildings. They, we don't have, they aren't three-story townhouses around them at all. They're small ranch houses on one floor, eight-foot ceilings, you know, and they're thirty-five foot sign. So, those are where, I mean, in, interstate, obviously, we understand that process. But when you hear our comments, I don't think, yeah, I don't think we're, we're not targeting the use of them all. We're just wondering how they appear in conjunction with our architecture.
Sure.
But thank you for all the information. Anyone else? Mr. Gleason, are you coming back up? Mr. Johnson, no? You all finished? Well, you'll be back, I hope.
So our, our recommendation would be to continue this public hearing to the August twenty-first meeting to allow us to work with the city attorney's office to finalize a formal, a final formal draft incorporating all these items.
So it, it's been moved that we continue this, I'm sorry, to the date of?
Twenty-first.
July?
August twenty-first.
August twenty-first, for, for review then. In a second, please? It's been moved in second. And all those in favor, aye, please? Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Again, thank you, everyone, for your participation. We'll move on then. Administrative items, I believe, none?
Under preliminary discussion items, we just have two quick items. I'm going to reverse the order. We had some discussions this morning. We have had steady sessions with you and discussions. And we're gonna discuss at some point initiating a text amendment as it relates to accessory dwelling units. But I think what we're, and it, it may, it may turn into our, you, you have a goal. The city commission has a goal to have some joint steady session with the planning commission and, and discussions with the interim city manager and with Lauren this morning. We may broaden that topic into, from beyond accessory dwelling units to, I'll, I'll call it, to looking at alternate forms of housing in, in a broader context. And we may have an opportunity to have a, the studies, you have focused more on this and spent more time on it than the city commission has, and they kind of need to be brought up to speed, so that what it may end up doing is turning into a joint steady session between the planning commission and city commission on housing initiatives. And then on the consumer fireworks facilities side, you will have a text amendment that has been filed for your next public hearing. It deals with the size of onsite storage containers for consumer fireworks facilities. But we had a new model emerge this summer that didn't, didn't work out. But that, the model, we call it a pull tab program. It basically, the way it worked, the way they tried to make it work was the retail store had empty packages with pull tabs inside the store. And then you could select the fireworks that you were interested from that, pay at the register, and go out to a storage container or trailer and pick up your product there.
What is a pull tab?
Pull tab is just that you, the, the merchandise is there, it has little tabs there. You pull the tab, you take the tab to the register. You don't, you don't actually have, we don't allow and wouldn't want the fireworks inside the store. But you say, here's black cats, or here's this. And you choose that, you pay at the register, and then you pick it up out at the, but our, our code doesn't presently allow for that. So the question we had is, would you entertain us bringing you some issues and options regarding that as an alternate method of dispensing?
And the product would be sold in retail locations?
You, not, not in the tents, but that as a retail store owner, you could have a pull tab program have that, but it would require you to have some secured storage on the site. So the fireworks would be there. And the connection is that today, our code limits your onsite storage container to a hundred and twenty square feet. The request that's coming before you is to increase that to four hundred and twenty-four square feet, which happens to correspond to a size of a eight by fifty-three semi-trailer. And so, so the, the two are related. But we wanted, if, if that goes forward, we just wanted to see if you wanted us to bring you some more, give you background in how the consumer fireworks facilities currently work, but then give you information about this alternate and what, what amendments would be needed for that. And then what we would have to do to our fee schedule, because our fee schedule is based on the size of your tent. And if you have sales that aren't involved in a tent, then we need to have a level playing field between those who choose to sell in a tent and those who do a different model.
Well, I'd love to learn more about that personally, but I thought they were where they're at for safety purposes.
They are where they're at for safety. And we don't want fireworks inventory inside stores.
Right.
But what, what it would amount to is if, if I have, if I have a fireworks stand in Sam's Club parking lot and I can have a fifty-three foot trailer there with fireworks inventory, does it matter whether I have purchased it at a tent in the parking lot or whether I had the transaction inside the store and, and paid for it there? We would just like to have the opportunity to lay all that out in front of you and get some guidance on that.
Who's requesting this? Is this something that we're suggesting or business people?
No, it is some, it is something that TNT fireworks attempted to do this summer. And we, we did not allow them to do it because it's not a model that our code recognizes. But it, it, it's something that we at least want to be open to have the discussion before next firework season to see what the implications are of allowing it.
You know, I, I don't feel that one fifty-three foot trailer would equal the amount of inventory in a tent. Because you have to have aisles in there to pull product out. And so, maybe square footage, you still would stay the same.
Most, most of our vendors have chafed under our, they say that our restriction on a hundred and twenty square feet is the most restrictive of any community that they do business in. So, that, that is, that is, that is coming forward for you in any event. And we would like, if, with your permission, we would like to tie those two together so you can see how they're connected.
Yeah, I'd love to know more about that. There's certainly lots of room for discussion about those subjects.
So, we will meet on the twenty-first for this. We have a rezoning case. We have a conditional use permit to, there is a, a plan to construct a memory care unit next door to resident six hundred on Elm Street across from the former comm care. That will be coming to you for your review on the twenty-first, as well as a text amendment dealing with fireworks storage containers.
Thank you.
And we, we want to give you a chance to get out while you can, because the parade is coming. And they may barric, they may barricade us, so.
Any other comments, thoughts, things you want to get on record?
Parade starts at seven. Spencer?
Yeah, but they start the barricades at six, I've been told, so.
You okay? Good. Well, we haven't, never hear from you. You should be the one to talk about new technology and electronic things and such.
He makes noise like an attorney's son.
He just doesn't want to be trapped here by the parade.
Well, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Wally, second?
Yes.
No, you can only be one. Mr. Lang, second. We adjourned.
These guys are getting so sensitive.